So, let's call the work session in order. Up first is the Housing Action Plan of all things.
Sorry. Thank you. I hope that wasn't recorded.
It may have been. Great editors, it'll be fine.
Okay, thank you Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are looking at the Housing Action Plan for the second time. We previously discussed it at our work session. So, got some general feedback last time. Tonight, we're gonna focus a little bit on format and then talk through some tools that were requested at the meeting. And some tools I think we can incorporate as we move forward with the Housing Action Plan. So, largely, the information is the same. We had some edits from the group, but the format is pretty drastically different. Our goal is that it could be used by residents to learn more, the council to use as a tool, but also to share with developers, just as a snapshot of where Carver is right now. What we know about it, what we've learned, something we can hand to them at the first meeting we have, just to say, this is where we're at with housing. This is where we think we're going. So, again, format is drastically different, but information is largely the same. Hopefully, it's a little more visually appealing than just four pages of text. So, both versions are on the screen right now. There was a significant error. No one has brought it up yet, but it needs to be greater than instead of less than. Yeah, that one hurt me all weekend, just knowing that it was in there.
Oh.
So, the council requested some additional information about other cities, what they're doing for affordable housing, how we might incorporate some of that work. So, there are definitely some heavy hitters in the metro that are doing this work, and this work is really inspiring in the area of affordable housing. So, the first that I'm going to talk through is St. Louis Park. They have a really robust inclusionary housing policy, so it only applies to multifamily. And that number depends on the affordability of the units. So, a lot of these cities are going to have the same information, that it's a robust program, it works really well, they're getting affordable housing. But they have a lot of tools that we don't have at this point, and tools that I don't think we'll have in the next several years, just based on council appetite, Carver size, what we're working on. So, for St. Louis Park, a developer, if they come in with an affordable product, they can apply for things like funds from the city of St. Louis Park. They have an Affordable Housing Fund available at the city, the Community Development Block Grant through HUD, city housing rehab funds, revenue bonds, they can use TIF, Housing Authority Funds. And then land write-downs. So, what that is, is the city essentially would sell property for cheaper if they knew a developer had property that was affordable, if they owned that property. So, moving through that. Sure, so a land write-down. The city might acquire a property and then sell it for cheaper than what they acquired it for, if there's an affordable component.
So, how does the city then write that off, if the city's taking a loss on a land purchase?
So, I suspect it's all part of this program, so it's under this policy that they have the ability to do that.
Okay. Do you know anything more about that?
Not specifically about St. Louis Park, but in general, you don't have to write it off. The city isn't required to like make money on. So, if you think back to the old MyPillow factory, you know, at one point, the city owned it. And based on the project that we were gonna get, there was some room to negotiate. So, you know, in the case of Carver Ridge, we sold it for, we didn't make any concessions on it. But based on how the deal could have come together, we might have considered selling it for a lower price in order to get the project in.
Okay.
But we don't. The loss comes at wherever the source of funding was or is. So, you know, without knowing what, how St. Louis Park is funding it, it could be through one of these, you know, the Community Development Block Grant is a pretty robust. Where it's typically hundreds of thousands, in some cases, millions of dollars of funding, so it's likely through that. It could also just be a piece of remnant property that's buildable, that the city's had for many years, and then just said, well, we want a better, higher and better use on this property. So, we wanna move it, so instead of getting a hundred thousand, we'll take fifty thousand an acre.
Okay, okay, thanks. All right, just while we're asking questions, in the packet, you have different colored font for some of these items. Are these kind of the larger investment pieces?
Yeah, so these are the pieces that we don't have, that we would need to move forward with some type of policy, some type of funding through the budget, to be able to have a program similar to these programs. So, right now, we don't have a fund available via the city that you could apply for to get money for affordable housing. The Community Development Block Grant, again, available through HUD, we could do an application to. We don't have rehab funds for residential. We have a downtown program that allows for some facade work. We don't offer revenue bonds. We do work with TIF, so I'll talk about that with Carver Ridge a little bit. Housing Authority again, and then land write-downs, we could do. Historically, we haven't. So, just some programs that St. Louis Park has, tools that they use that we currently don't have. Something we could absolutely entertain, but not something that we likely could get to their level to be able to say, our program is as robust and we're as open to affordable housing as they are. Similarly, Edina has a program, Inclusionary Housing Policy. You need to have twenty units or more, again, based on the percentage of affordability. And again, they have some programs that we don't have. So, the financial assistance is available from the city of Edina, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority through the city. They also offer low-interest loans through the city, so something that we could entertain, but probably something we don't have the capacity to do right now as a staff in Carver. Things that we could do that they do is density bonuses, so that's comp plan related, how you can move density from a parcel to a different parcel. Not something we've ever thought about, just because we don't have a project that applies. Parking reductions. Parking is wildly expensive, as I think we all probably know, as we think through projects. So, a way Edina is doing a cost reduction is saying, instead of requiring two parking stalls per unit, you only need one. So, parking reductions, TIF, again, something we've used and we have in our toolbox, and then property tax abatement. Third is Minnetonka. So, they have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is funded through the issuance of conduit bonds. Funding is available through the city, loans, matching grant dollars, rental assistance, down payment assistance, a really robust program, I was really inspired reading it. But likely not something that we can do at this point, just knowing some of the constraints that we have. So, now that we've talked kind of gloom and doom about these great programs that we probably can't do, there are a couple that I think we could use as the Housing Action Plan. Molded to be our own, obviously, but included as policy work. So, a good example of that is the city of Waconia. So, as part of a development, they have the ability to waive sewer and water trunk, that says truck, trunk fees. That, for a project that can meet affordable criteria. So, that criteria could be determined by the city, so we could say thirty percent needs to meet X, Y, Z, sixty percent needs to meet X, Y, Z. But we need to require that there's a guarantee of affordability. So, if a project is affordable for five years, they use this program. Then switches to a new owner, and suddenly is no longer affordable, the trunk fees need to be paid back, which I think is a good catch, just to make sure that the affordability is perpetual. That it continues to be there since they got that bonus of a waiver fee. So, this is something that we absolutely could explore. I talked about it with Dave Anderson, the city attorney, just briefly last week. And he didn't have major apprehension about it, but said, like all attorneys do, we'll need to work it into the policy, review a couple drafts, go through it. And then it would be adoption of the policy for the fee waiver program, so.
So, how, it's the city that's having to monitor this, right? So, I mean, these are larger, I mean, Waconia's not that much larger, but if you're looking at Edina or something like that.
Yep.
If you're talking like this, I mean, do you get notices? How are you going to, how would the city know when some of these buildings have to be sold?
So, it's pretty typical that we know about a transaction of a building, but we could write into the agreement. If at any point the building were to sell, notification of the city would be required.
For the most part, this fee waiver would come in the form of new construction, when someone applies for their permit for the connection fee.
Right, but I, you were talking about it just to change hands.
Yep.
These buildings sometimes do, that the city would have to be on watch for it and looking for the claimant's fees if they didn't have affordable housing.
I would say in Carver, that feels manageable.
And just as a note that I should pass along, there's, so Glenn can't make it to the meeting tonight, which I shared. He wanted me to pass along, I said, I can't speak on his behalf, but I could summarize and told him that this would come before the council at a regular meeting. But in general, Glenn didn't favor the fee waiver program, just thinking that ultimately, it's subsidized by someone else to pay for those fees. So, you know, the water treatment plant costs a hundred thousand dollars, and everyone pays their share. If these units aren't paying their share, it's being paid by someone else, and so fundamentally, he's against that concept.
Kind of in theory, if we do anything to, if these, kind of make, kind of dangle that carrot out there for affordable housing, it's gonna require some kind of buy-in from the city. Just my thoughts, you know? Yeah, I mean, because if it had to be rolled in and eaten by somebody else, what does that look like?
So, the programs so far are largely related to multifamily, so thinking through projects that have over an X amount of units. But there is a program that we talked about with the CDA, the Land Trust Program, where the CDA owns the land under the house. The property owner owns the home, rents the land from the CDA, usually for ten dollars a month. Something that the CDA runs, you have to qualify for the program, so you have to hit the county's area median income of X, Y, Z to be able to qualify. And the property stays affordable, so when the property owner wants to sell, the CDA, I think, has a right of refusal first, so they are able to keep that property in the Land Trust Program. I reached out to Elise Durbin just to hear what that looks like for different cities, just because there is, there is cost to that program as well. Typically, it sounds like cities contribute about ten thousand dollars to participate in the Land Trust Program, so something we could explore. If single-family affordable is something that we want to think about, doesn't have to be now, but it could be in one year, two year, five years, if we're thinking. To add a line item to the budget for the Land Trust Program, so to partner with the CDA for a Land Trust Program in Carver, yeah.
For that ten thousand, is that for the project or per like resident?
So, it'd be per lot. So, if we wanted five, it would be fifty thousand, one would be roughly ten thousand, so it's been a. Nope, just ones. So, for the purchase of the land and the home. So, Waconia uses the program, Victoria has a couple sites, Chaska has a couple homes, so seems like a well-established program through the CDA. Obviously, they administer the program and are doing pretty good work around that as well. So, a couple of options to discuss tonight for tools, the fee waiver is obviously targeting more multifamily, Land Trust is largely single-family. There are some tools that we do have in our toolbox today that I mentioned through some of the other examples. So, TIF is a really good example. Carver Ridge is a TIF project, so a portion of their units will be affordable in perpetuity for the next thirty years of the life of their TIF. And then we also, as you know, see quite a few grant applications. We offer a lot of letters of support to affordable projects. So, the CDA has asked us a few times to write letters of support for their project. We also have things like the comp plan, that lays the framework for what we need for affordable housing, and then the Housing Action Plan will also be added to our toolbox. As, I think, a good representation of, we know where we're at right now, we have some tools of where we want to get, these are how we can support affordable housing. So, the goal tonight is to talk through some of those tools, figure out what you're interested in exploring, what we can add to the policy and the Housing Action Plan.
Right. So, just random thoughts, you know, like this is, we do have some tools in our toolbox, we have some stuff that we can use for. We're kind of starting from really the shallow end of the pool for this. So, it's gonna take a lot of building blocks to get to a Edina or Minnetonka, and probably not gonna be during the time that any of us are sitting up here. But I think what we do is so important to get started. I really like the idea of the Land Trust. I know that that's something that the CDA is pretty proud of as well, based on what I've seen. I don't know that I love the fee waivers, although it's gonna take something to get affordable housing. And recognizing that that's the case, I think I'd be interested in exploring that a little bit more. Do know that we didn't necessarily write in whack and sack fees for Carver Crossing Part Two into our long-term financial plan, is that right? Or is that just not?
We just don't know when they're gonna come in, and so we haven't included them. At some point, we would, it's just.
Got it, okay.
We haven't felt confident enough to include them in the plan yet, so.
I think there's also opportunity. I don't think it necessarily has to be a fee waiver program. Could it be fee reduction? So, instead of the full charge, is it a reduced cost based on the affordability of a project, based on number of units? So, I don't think this program is one-size-fits-all. I don't think we can look at Waconia and say, yep, that's it. I think we could mold it probably to something that feels comfortable, if it feels like too much to bite off for a full fee waiver at this point, too.
With the Land Trust, so the city, sorry, is part of that fee initially, the home that they're purchasing, is that at some sort of discount? Where, I mean, how do they, I'm sure taking the land out is a big chunk, but what does the house, what does that kind of?
Yeah, so it typically is not new construction. It's typically a house that I would say falls in our naturally affordable housing. So, I wouldn't picture it to be in one of our new developments, but somewhere else in the city. Cities generally participate, and then they also look for private donations throughout the city. So, like in Waconia, I think like Hometown Bank had a pretty big donation, so it's a partnership through several agencies usually. But it's a home that's typically more quote-unquote affordable.
But then, that, that's another different plot, and I have two, because if it's already considered semi-affordable, then that means there's a larger market that could already possibly purchase it. I'm not against having a couple of them, but I think because that sort of housing stock is kind of, I mean, we don't have a ton of it, so it seems like when they do come up, they go pretty fast. Let me afternoon that one around for a minute. One other thing I wanna mention, too, is for these, if we're looking at St. Louis Park or wherever, a lot of these, all of these helpers are multifamily units besides the Land Trust. Do any of these have anything besides Land Trust they do for single-family residential?
Not that I've found. Although, sorry, there are some like, there's some rehab programs that you could do rehab on a single family, but not. The thing about these is it's typically new construction, and single-family usually isn't a place that affordable usually pops up right now.
So, the community development.
It was.
Okay, now, the Community Development Block Grant, so let's say we were, can you use that towards if we wanted to do Land Trust? Is that something you can apply for and use towards that, or what, tell me more about that block grant. Who gets it? How do you get it? What's your chances of getting it? What do you do with it?
Yeah, so it's usually a pretty large-scale project, so I would say a Land Trust probably wouldn't qualify, but I didn't apply that lens to my research on it.
Okay.
So, I would say it's something we could absolutely look into, but I would say it wouldn't apply to Land Trust specifically. It's mostly redevelopment projects on a larger scale, since it's a nationwide program.
Okay.
So, I've had an experience where, as a part of a successful application, and the majority of the dollars were used. It was in a downtown area, commercial, lower level, residential, upper level. But the, the city got the funds, and then if the property owner wanted to use them, they had to guarantee for a period of years that that, those, that unit would be affordable over that period. And this, not to be like a donor, but one of the things that was a challenge in a smaller community was, they had to fall under, and I'm not a expert in this area, but Davis Bacon. So, like, there are certain wage requirements for the people doing the work, which was, at least at the time, what the people involved was off-putting. And so, but to Ken Aaron's point, it is usually like, like a whole block of units. And it's rigorous, but there's usually quite a bit of resources available. But it wouldn't be, at least in my experience, it's not typical for like a Land Trust-type program. That doesn't mean, that it doesn't happen, I'm just not familiar with it.
Okay, okay. I may have some more questions after this, but. Okay, we'll come back. Laurie?
I definitely favor the Land Trust partnership. The, Land Trust, because it's a partnership with CDA. I feel like they've been a really good partner with us. And that they kind of have already this, the framework for how to qualify somebody, or who, how, all that, they have the framework for it. And so, we could look to them for handling that. Not opposed to the fee waiver programs such as Waconia does, but not my first choice, mainly because of the difference on how you determine. And how do you, you know, how you attract that.
And it doesn't have to be you choose one or the other. I think there's opportunity if you want to.
Like priority-wise, or like where I could see matching up with what our, what we're trying to accomplish, would be the Land Trust partnership with CDA.
Sure. I also support the Land Trust. It's existing. It seems to be successful in multiple cities, so that seems like a no-brainer to participate in something like that. I guess I'd also like to learn a little bit more about TIFs and how we can continue to leverage that in our community. I'm not sure I have a super-good knowledge and understanding of that process, and how much pre-planning we may need to do to leverage that tool in our toolbox going forward as we look at some maybe larger developments coming to Carver.
Do you want any commentary, or is that a future?
I actually, I have a thought, maybe I'm wrong, but the only reason I don't lean towards that is, and this might be where I need more education, is. I feel like it benefits more the developer, the landowner, the, or whoever is investing in, building it, not the individual who would be living there.
So, for Carver Ridge, as part of their TIF agreement, a portion of the units need to stay affordable. So, the people living in those units benefit based on their rent prices.
What if it wasn't a rental, and if it wasn't, someone owned the home?
I would say it wouldn't be likely that we would entertain an application for TIF for single-family, just based on the requirements it needs to meet. So, TIF, you can apply for, but it needs to be a requirement for the project to happen, and with the amount of single-family we've had recently, I don't think you can make that argument.
There's a piece, you've probably heard it said when we talk about TIF, but it's called the but-for analysis. And so, in order to qualify for TIF, this is a state requirement, you have to be able to show that but-for that tax increment, your project wouldn't happen. And so, the developer, in all cases, needs to show kind of their financials, to show that without this tax increment support, they wouldn't be able to make their project feasible. And we could connect with Erin, we can update this, but you know, there is a, it's a twenty-five-year tax increment district for affordable housing that you could do. So, we could, you know, bring Paul Steinman in or one of his colleagues to talk about.
Not always twenty-five years, that isn't something where.
Well, you can, you can go up to twenty-five years. There are, you know, typically, you know, you can do single-family in that. You know, I've seen like more so like duplexes and townhomes. And I think one of the things that, when I think about this whole process is, there aren't really any programs for kind of that home that was built in Carver back in like maybe the nineties or late eighties, kind of in like your neighborhood, Lori. You know, and so, a lot of the, a lot of homes of that vintage are gonna be subject to, as with it, probably any neighborhood, market conditions. Like, you know, is there a high demand? Can you find that? Like, Chrissy, you were saying, like, sometimes these homes come on the market, and there's, you know, four or five offers, if, you know, if everything's trending. Because it's hard to find a home at a certain price point, and so, I think what we're gonna, it'll be, I think it'd be a good exercise for us to bring in Baker Tilly and go over what that is, and what type of housing product you could end up with. But traditionally, it would be a partnership then with a developer to put up a certain type of housing stock that meets that criteria. You know, and then making the finances work, so that it kind of worked together, if you will.
And that's probably the important part, if you think about the builders who are in town right now, the Lennar, D.R. Horton, M.I., the but-for test would not apply for them. They're for-profit companies, they're large, they are national, they probably will never qualify for a TIF project.
When we're talking, sorry, Land Trust, this is kind of tiny, kind of, I think Brent said it in one way, and Chrissy, you alluded to it. But we will, this is playing the real estate game a little bit, right? Like, like, in, we'd be lucky to get one or two Land Trust homes in Carver. Even the examples don't have a ton. We're never gonna have thirty Land Trust homes in our community.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so, I think, I think that that's one tool in our toolkit, but I think, yeah, unfortunately, look at it as like, whoo, we did Land Trust, we're good with affordable housing. So, I think it's just like a really small slice of the pie. Certainly, a really awesome benefit to have in our community, but not a solution.
So, I'm thinking it that way, thanks for putting that out. I would consider the fee waiver program, but I would like to think of it more as with somebody else's for fee reduction.
I have a couple more questions about, if we go to the Edina page with Inclusionary Housing Policy, and they're talking about the Edina Housing Foundation. If you said it, I missed it, what, where does the fun, funding come from for that foundation?
I believe it's a nonprofit.
Okay, so, I mean, who's putting money in, though? I mean, okay, they have a nonprofit. Is it large corporation? Is it one philanthropist who just believes in the system of, of the housing policy? I don't understand.
Yeah, I can speak to specifics, but I don't believe it's a full arm of the city. I think it's a private group.
Okay, okay. So, when we're looking at the Inclusionary Housing Policy, when they're talking about new multifamily, right now, I feel like we only think about CDA, because that's what we have had. Or, you know, with Carver Crossing and things like that, but there's, I mean, we do have, I mean, we have Carver Ridge. But saying here that they have new multifamily, that must have ten percent of units at something, I, I actually like that in saying, okay, if you're gonna put in sixty rental units, you know, ten percent, five percent, whatever number that might be, I kind of, I like that. I think it fits well with the demographic. I think it fits well with the size that they're putting in. So, I'm not, and I'm not against the waiver at this point, I'm just, I have to say, I'm not fully on board with waiving the fees. Because again, I, I understand where Glenn was coming from, saying if it doesn't come from one place, it's just you're robbing it from another. But once they're in, and you have, say, ten percent of units, I mean, those are the county programs that they have, that you can apply for if you need that. So, I don't know, I guess I'm more, and yes, some of it is all, you could all say that's pulling from here and there. But I think for me, when we're looking at the waiver, I'd be more inclined to say that if you're gonna put in something over whatever unit number we would decide, would have to have a certain percentage that would be at, I guess, the inclusionary rate.
So, we typically would need to form a partnership at that point. We couldn't just have that requirement without saying, if you do that, we'll give you this in exchange. So, if you think about, if it's, this doesn't happen, but if Lennar is building an eighty-unit luxury apartment complex, we can't just say four of those need to be affordable.
Okay, so, when I'm reading this from the Edina one, that, that isn't very clear here, because it just says that it applies to that, and that's what they have, so.
So, to meet that requirement, they need to be able to hit the affordable housing goals of the city, and if they do, then they can apply for city funding.
Okay. Which is different and outside of TIF.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That confuses it a little bit more, okay.
Can you maybe, I think I'm picking up on, like, the, can you maybe explain, Erin, like, that we can't through zoning code require affordable housing? It can only be a, basically, it has to be voluntary, is that?
Well, they get something in return.
Right.
But yes.
So, I, I think I know like a little bit of the, of the framework. Correct me if I'm wrong, or if you don't know. But from what I've heard, really on the periphery is, there's a, they do have, I believe Edina has a requirement for affordable housing. And if you can't meet it, then they pay in, the developer would pay in, kind of like Vicobal Park dedication.
Okay.
And so, then that money, then, if someone says, well, I'm gonna do a hundred percent market rate, and they can't meet, they don't meet that twenty percent, then they pay in a certain fee. And I don't know the details of that, but they pay in a fee, and then that money is used to then subsidize what you see here. And again, that, I'm probably missing a bunch of details on that, but the, I think the piece to that is, you know, you need some volume then, in order, otherwise, you'll, you could be sitting with five thousand dollars in a fund for ten years, because we have, you know, Edina's gonna have multiple multifamily housing projects. We might have one every six or seven years, so. But, you know, I think maybe the critical piece is if, if you find, whether it's this one or other pieces in here that you. That you want more information on, we can go back and get even more information. So one of, you know, maybe part of this exercise is like, we're not interested in this, so you could cross that off. But I'm hearing a little bit of land trust. I'm hearing a little bit of fee reduction. You know, if there's two or three other things that you want more information on, we'll put those into the plan. As like a, kind of a mini strategic plan, as an action plan and follow-up. So you're not approving anything. You're just saying you're interested in learning more about these concepts as part of your overall strategy.
I like the idea of going down the path of, you know, this Edina model, if you will. I'm just curious, not sure that anybody has the answer to it. Like, what's the tipping point of luring development? Or scaring them away with the incentives that. Can be scaled to a Carver level versus kind of Edina. Does that make sense? So I do like the idea of your twenty units or more. Okay, well, welcome to Carver. We have the requirements X, Y, and Z, and for that you will get A, B, and C. I just, I'm super curious what that, that threshold is. Also, just a random and I, I hope related comment, but kind of through all this conversation, I keep thinking of. It was probably six years ago now where we brought in ULI and Joy, might have been the only other person. I don't know if you were able to make it, but it was a joint session between the Planning Commission and Council. I think we were both on Planning Commission at the time, but they talked about development. I wonder if they don't have any insight on affordable housing. And specifically, the ULI is a group of land and real estate professionals. And it's the group through my, the Minnesota mayors, kind of is formulated and run through. But I wonder if they wouldn't be good folks to bring back in to talk about affordable housing and. Like the infancy of affordable housing.
Do you feel like that would be dissimilar from the CDA presentation?
Not necessarily. But I'm also, I'm curious as to a different viewpoint, to see it through a different lens versus kind of the CDA. Versus kind of sitting on the other side of the table.
If that's their. If that's their profession though, right? So they're, you say they're real estate agents, things like that. I mean. I feel like we're going to get, I mean, because it's, it's a profession for them of, of, it's their money-making job. We're going to get something that maybe skews us in a different direction where I think. And I'm not sure what they came and talked to you about before. I don't know what they're, what.
They don't have an agenda.
They don't have an agenda. Thank you. That's what I was trying to get at. Like, if they're coming with an agenda, like, yeah, do this because it's going to make it easier for me to develop in Carver now, on the side.
No, it's a voluntary thing. I think you participate in some.
Yeah, I mean, I. I'd say that you are, like, you feel like you're speeding your wheels a little bit. Is that fairness? Is that what you're going to say? It's kind of supposed to feel like that. I guess that's the intention is like you're not, we don't need you to decide anything tonight. We just, if you're interested in it and, you know, I think Eric and Aaron can find like the, the best resource. To get that information to you. So you're just, you're just really seeking to identify the questions that you want answered, but you're not necessarily going to have those answered tonight. So if we can identify those questions, which I think we have, so you, you're kind of interested in what this inclusionary housing policy looks like. And what are the mechanics of it and the land use or the land trust program, the fee reduction program? Am I missing anything?
The Minnetonka one is not, doesn't appeal to me. I don't know that the city, as where we're at right now. We're going to be able to set aside our own grant dollars and pay down assistance programs. I'd rather explore the other ones before that one.
So the. There are sometimes like a. A healthcare group will want to refinance certain debt that they have. And they'll engage with the city to use our tax-exempt status to find, refinance their debt. And so on some, in some, in some situations, the city will provide that. But then they provide a, an admin fee of maybe one percent of the principal of the loan amount or the bond amount. And collect that. There was, oh man, maybe seven or eight years ago, the city participated in that. For, for a healthcare revenue bonds, for Ridgeview, for some debt they were refinancing. We collected a, a small fee. It's, it wasn't significant because the city can only. Extend a ten million dollars. And it has to be, we're only allowed to borrow up to ten million dollars per year. It's, I'm getting into really weedy stuff, but it's the difference between being qualified debt and non-being qualified debt. It's, a long story short, we collect fees. Doesn't happen very often.
And long story short, Carver is smaller than Minnetonka, so they have a larger borrowing capacity.
And there's risk involved in that if the borrower, borrower was to default?
Not to the city.
No, not to the city. But it's not something that you seek out. It's something that somewhat, you know. In most cases, it's going to be like Ridgeview or Saint Francis if they're, you know, and they look for. Kind of partnering, there are cities that use their services, so in most cases, it's going to, you know, it'd be one or two of those folks. But it, it happens maybe once a decade.
And not something we likely can create. So something that happens in Minnetonka likely naturally does not happen.
So in closing on that, for the Minnetonka one, I, I'm not in favor of that one. I mean, we had a twelve point nine percent like tax hike this year. So eleven point nine, sorry, eleven point nine. So to say like, we're going to be setting aside the, you know, because it says be a city here, you know, with loans and matching funds. I just don't think that we're in a position at this size to do that.
So my final thought is, I, I think you summarized well, Brent, what we're looking for here. But, you know, we just had a meeting talking about trunk area charges, right? We looked at two areas, potential growth of the city, and both of those areas, if I'm not mistaken, for our comp plan are medium and high-density residential areas. So I think it would be good for the city to kind of get a little bit proactive on if those areas were to develop. What are some of the tools we might use? What might some of that affordability component, we, what do we want it to look like? You know, what does Waconia use as the criteria for their reduction of charges? I think we got a good idea from the Edina example. It'd be good to kind of know that so that going in, maybe we can be a little bit more. We're trying to be proactive with the trunk area charges. Maybe we can be a little proactive with this.
And we're talking about, I mean, some of this can be, when you think about our water connection charges around eight thousand dollars and round numbers. I mean, if you discounted that fifty percent, that's still four thousand. And then you apply that to a hundred units, well, you're talking like four hundred thousand dollars, you know, pretty quickly. So, I mean, this is significant money depending upon the level of reduction. And you think about how many units are in a multifamily. And then you think about some of these connection fees, if you take that amount on. I'm not doing a commercial not to do this, but just kind of eyes wide open, then, then that's, you know, fundamentally four hundred thousand. That is added to the bill, that so, as Aaron mentioned, we'd have to go through a, a pretty detailed and extensive process. To document why we're doing it, how we're doing it. Because sometimes some of these things can be right for someone who feels like they're on the short end to fight back on something like this, so.
What you said had me thinking and, you know, with the trunk fees comment, we don't have any high-density areas.
I just looked at the comp plan and there is. It, there's high in the big woods and there's medium density in the. I said whatever we're calling that, the southern part. Yeah, the medium density. I, again, I don't know if, right? What that necessarily means, what type exact property. I mean, it's medium density over a chunk of land. But I guess my point was, we're trying to be proactive because we expect development. Best we will probably see a high-density residential product coming our way. So let's be preact, proactive with what we might want to see from an affordability perspective for those types of properties.
And where my head is at is, if we're going to put the time into this plan, let's make sure that we have some density in our.
Yes.
Comp plan, so that we're not, we can have a really great plan that we're also very happy with and all completely comfortable with. And that have like zero acreage.
Right.
High density.
Hope our website is great. Search comp plan, land use. There you go.
Are we all good on housing action plan?
Do you, do you want somebody, you know, this, because this is, we spent some time on this. Do you want somebody besides, I mean, whether it's Urban Land Institute or somebody else? Do you want a different vantage point of affordable housing programs other than the CDA? Is that, is that a to-do?
You know, maybe that was an ill-timed suggestion. I would love to see that ULI come back. Because I just think that was so, such a great experience having them out here when they talked to us about, it was mostly commercial development when they came out. So maybe we can just set that aside. I, I'm comfortable in your abilities to research. I'm comfortable in everyone's knowledge and ability to look this up. So I don't necessarily, I'm not jostling for a second opinion necessarily.
Is it helpful for fee reduction to do like a sample project to see what it looks like with different cut downs?
I, I think so. I mean, I would like to see it compared to what it would mean from a TIF perspective. I mean, it's dollars either way, right? To the city. And I don't, I don't know what we're comparing. Or what those comparisons might look like, but I think that if we could pick a high-density piece of prop, or a high-density housing comp plan. Piece of property in that Big Woods area. And just do some quick math to see what that looks like. I think that's a great idea. And then that, I think that'll help cement it for all of us who are like, ah, this is a little nebulous for us.
I think that will help correlate it to the long-term financial plan too.
Yeah.
There are so many pieces working together that feel, I think, a little spaced out, but I think we can pull it all together.
Okay, I like that.
I have a longer question. I thought it was done, but um, so with the fee reduction program. Is the sewer and water, is, is it just that? Are there other things that are negotiable? And not that this is where I'm thinking, but the, just like a park dedication or like be able to say, okay, this isn't, this isn't, can't touch this.
Right.
It would be helpful to have that.
So I will say every developer comes in day one and says like, I'm not paying park dedication. And we typically say, yes, you are. I would say without a formal policy, that discussion gets really tricky just to say, you don't have to pay it, but you do because X, Y, Z. So having something like the housing action plan with a fee waiver, a fee reduction program gives us that tool piece of it. Instead of just arbitrary, we like you better than them.
Right, but I think what Lori, if I'm at, if I'm getting out, you're saying where can I take it from? Can you use?
So when we should be fee scheduled, can you take other line items and say, okay, this is a possibility?
You could.
We're just contemplating the connection fee, so not trunk, future trunk fees should you choose to adopt them. Right now, we're just looking at water connection and san, the local sanitary sewer connection.
Sack and whack, yep. But SWAC is good too, a combo.
That's just what we're looking at. There are other line items that could be.
I wouldn't recommend it at this point.
You good? We're going to move on? Okay. All good? Um, okay, you have what you need.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Riverside Park concept.
There we go. Alrighty, thank you again. So as part of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the city council asked for a concept for Riverside Park. What it would look like to redevelop, think about it a little bit differently. So we worked with Bolton and Mink to think about this park a little bit differently. A big driver would be to return a large area to native prairie plantings. So phase one of this project would be a large swath of land in the park that would return to native plantings with mowed trails. We would keep several of the features of the park that people are used to and use, like the campsites, the archery range. Something that I think we got excited about was the river overlook. So if you go down to Riverside Park on any given weekday, there's usually people down there eating their lunch in the car, taking some time away from work. So we would create an overlook area that people could park, take a look at the river, hopefully have some downtime during their day. So a new area in the park. I know that there were some big-scale projects that we were looking to have in this park. We talked a lot at the Parks Commission about potentially preserving some history in this area. So are there previous buildings or monuments that we could solidify in that area? So is it a plaque system where we can say, this is where the ballroom was with some pictures, similar to the historic kiosks or some type of wayfinding? I'm thinking about the ballfields that were there, just knowing the really rich history that Riverside Park has that I don't think a new resident knows about. Just because it's, it looks so different than it did many iterations that it has had. Something else that I think is appealing for this, Chad would probably be better to speak about it, is reduced maintenance for the public services staff. They spend a lot of time down in this park mowing and maintaining it. So returning to prairie plantings would be a benefit there as well. Bolton and Mink, there it is, okay. So phase one, we understood that this project could be larger-than-life potentially. So in the packet, there were several iterations of what it would look like for different phasing items. Phase one would just be what was on the screen here. So return to native plantings, the overlook area. And then the trails that are more natural, so prairie seedings throughout. I think ideally we would move forward with the full concept, but knowing some restraints we have with the park dedication budget, moving forward with Ironwood Park. Phase one feels like something we could potentially work towards in the next few years. I'll open it up for discussion.
Questions?
Well, I have some.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, um, so I really like the idea of the prairie plantings. That area just seems like, just, it, it looks like a lot to maintain and to mow. And could be better suited for something else. I love the idea of eventually having a trail to go look at the wildlife on that lake. Because there's always so much of it there. So I really like that concept as well as the overlook. I don't think we ever sit and overlook the river very often here, and so I like adding additional spaces like that for Carver. My only question is for that prairie plantings area, how much does that flood? I don't have a good knowledge of that.
I'd say anecdotally, that area typically does not. Usually can get up to the road, but not usually over.
Which area?
So, so if we were to put prairie planting kind of trail there, is that area prone to flood? I mean, I would assume some area closer to the.
Even if it doesn't go over, it come, the marsh seeps in, but it doesn't, I mean, it will return to the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I mean, so I've been down there when, hasn't quite overtaken from the riverside yet, but the marsh is obviously moving.
Closer in.
It's, it's coming down. But you're looking about where that big, that bubble of trees is.
Okay, there, okay, thank you.
That's generally where I've seen it and then after that, the park goes, see, but if it's just one where it's not going to overtake the river.
Yeah.
Um, the marsh usually to, from what I've seen, doesn't really go past about there.
Yeah, okay.
And once it does, then the whole river's coming to meet it anyways.
Yeah, okay. And then I just, I know this isn't part of the plan, but I just had side questions about how the camps, campsites are rented. Does the city control those?
We do.
Do we keep track of it, like the facility rentals?
We do, I think.
We do.
Yeah, I think.
We permit it. I don't know if we, I don't think we keep, we inventory like how many we've had in a certain year.
I don't think it's on the, like, the facility rental report.
I know, that was going to be my question. I know that was a really long list. And I don't recall seeing it, but, okay. So it's maybe, it's just a free permit? Is that what we're?
No, there's a fee.
Charged for them, okay.
It should probably be on there. So when I was staff, I actually had those installed through grant.
Oh.
And some park dad money, I think, if I think back. I can't remember. But we, there is a fee and it still has, they're all marked down there still.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah, and then I don't know why, maybe we should probably include that and to see how much usage they are getting if we.
If you want it, you can.
It'd be great to add it just to the facility rentals report and the fee schedule.
It's definitely in the fee schedule. I know that.
Is it on the fee schedule?
But I don't, we don't see like the backend of what's.
Anyway, okay, so side questions. You answered my side questions. I like the concept.
Lori?
Um, I have a couple things. We don't get the other phases or today's just about phase one?
Today is just phase one.
All right, but I like seeing all of those. Um, uh, and I don't know, so glad Mr. Chad Shell is here. And I do like this phase one, I like the idea too that it can, you know, possibly lower some of the time that um his department's putting. Are we able to break that to dollars? Or just estimate to be like, okay, we're gonna spend this much, but each year we'll save roughly. And maybe it varies so much too, so.
I really took over this one too.
But yeah, well, while we're waiting for him, and here's something too, it's just more like an idea, have to like talk aloud, is um, should we have any more parking by the archery? And I'm, I'm being serious. I just don't know if there would be a need for it, or is
Rather than just parking on the grass right now?
Yeah, or is there, you park on the side, but vehicular, river over park, I do have a hard time with that word vehicular.
Sounds like an accident.
The uh, yeah, the um scenic parking. Uh, yeah, so that was one thing too, like, should there be more parking stalls, you know, but kind of, I know it brought it up with other things, but it's hard to anticipate the usage. Okay, but is there an idea of what we might save?
Dollar wise, I couldn't give you an answer, but time wise, I mean, we mow it once a week and it takes one person an entire day to mow and trim.
Wasn't it too that it's
It's extremely rough. Yeah, that's, yeah, you have to go extremely slow, just because uh in two thousand nineteen, when the river was flooding, there's a lot of pockets and divots in there, in that area. And we have had some feedback from uh people that use the archery that they would like it a little bit longer distance. So if we set it back from the road, we could do um maybe some just off the, off the road parking there, crushed rock. That'd be a good idea.
Thanks for answering my question. Yeah, that was my first thoughts.
Lori? Christie?
Um, okay, so I obviously have a lot of history with this park and I've spent a lot of time down there. We host events down there. Um, when I look at this, overall, I really like the plan. Um, there's just a couple of, of things that, excuse me, that just kind of from knowing that park's well too, that I, that I noticed. So the top, I mean, the top part, I guess the next to the marsh, um, I think that would be a great area to have kind of grown in, you know? There was times this summer when we, it had grown up a little bit and I could actually envision it for the first time with this trail. And I would thought, you know what, that's a pretty neat idea. When, knowing, I mean, it will change some events that we have down there, but that, things change sometimes and that, that's probably going to happen. Um, but I do like it above north of the road, towards the marsh side of the road. When I'm looking at the bottom part, um, and where it has the other bullet point there, to have that be native plantings too, in that smaller area next to the scenic overlook, I would actually prefer that to maintain as grass, because you've got some grass along here when it comes to the campsites as well. But that gives people a chance, if they wanna get out of the car with their kids and throw the ball around or something like that, that it's not com- completely overgrown in all areas. So for me, I'd prefer to see that that piece to stay maintained, cause they're gonna have to come down and mow some, but that takes, I mean, by having that upper piece, that takes a whole lot of mowing out. Um, I don't think it would be a bad idea to keep that just grassed in the way it is. And right now, that's not the worst part of the park, that grass over on that side seems pretty decent, like the ground seems pretty decent compared to the marsh side where it's really, really chunky and fumpy and kind of a mess though. Um, are you going to plan to take the concrete pad out then? So if you think of this, the sawgy bottom, nope, it's there. So where the sawgy bottom is at, that's where we end up putting the tent if you ever come down there, it's on that. It's the old, I don't know, there must have been a shelter there for the ballfields or something.
I think there's no, at this point, there's no reason to keep it down there, but we haven't talked about it specifically. But I would imagine that if we do this, we take it out.
Okay, so what I was wondering then, is back in the day, we had talked about whether we could put a shelter back down there or things like that, obviously from the flood plain. Um, is it something where we could have another little piece of trail going to that and use that bottom of that concrete pad and just put out, you know, the most minimal roof and like a couple of, you know, four or six whatever little poles coming down, so that there is a place to get out of the sun if you wanna walk on the trails, whatever, a little spot in there. I don't know if we can do something like that down there or not. I don't remember. Question for later. Question to look into. I like, I like the overlook part, the overlook area. Uh, when we were talking about, you're talking about uh putting in maybe some signage. So because I have seen full-size old growth trees going through there on their sides in, in a, in a flood, um, is it something that we can make sure that is removable? We can unclick them, take them out, get them out, the same as we do with the archery targets, so they don't end up in Chaska?
Yes, we also talked about having them flush in the ground, so we would mow around them, but it potentially would be something that would be in the ground.
Okay, what is not, like if you have a base, the part that sticks up, really needs to be removable? I really think that it's gonna be a waste of money if we don't. I mean, the stuff that flies through there.
This is gonna be dark, but think about like a headstone in the ground.
Oh, so it's not gonna be, cause I'm picturing our kiosk, not that type?
No, I would say similar content where we could potentially have some pictures and information, but yes, knowing that some debris goes through that area, we wouldn't want anything in there that could be snapped.
So if, just looking for, if we decide not to do the big stone in the ground, whatever, if we're gonna put a sign, just make sure that they can be taken out, same as the archery targets when the, when the floods come through. Are these picnic tables down by the, by the uh parking lot? Is that where those little squares are supposed to be?
I'm gonna say yeah.
I would think so, but I, I just wanna make sure that it wasn't
They could be boulders as well, so people don't drive into the river.
They're rectangle. Nope, over here is, oh, sorry, this parking lot.
Oh, over here.
I'm assuming those are picnic tables?
If you feel passionately that you would like them there.
I don't, I just didn't know if they were something else or if they were picnic tables. Um, there is a horseshoe pit down there? That, what are, what are the thoughts with that? Leaving that in, if, taking it out?
I don't think we have plans to remove it at this point.
Okay, so then, that to me too, along with keeping that.
Brent, just, I feel like you just gave me a look.
I haven't seen them used in
They haven't. I don't see anyone down there using them. They used to
Yeah, I guess I would be, I'd advocate to have those, cause just having that random piece of metal sticking out of the ground feels like a liability.
I'm not, could be liability, that doesn't bother me, but they aren't, they aren't well-used. I'd rather see it grassed over. I mean, if it was something where you had big plans to keep them, I don't, but
Aaron's a big horseshoeer.
Yep, down there on her lunch breaks.
She's like, you wanna, you wanna run it back for some horseshoe? And I'm like, eh, I'm good.
Yeah. All right, so I guess my strongest um feeling about this is to keep that bottom piece grass. Um, and then the small comments I've made, otherwise I think it looks really good.
Great. Um, my only concern is I'd like to know a little bit more about how um flood resistant those grasses would be. It's a pretty big dollar amount and I, just my mind's eye can see, although it's been a while since that park was flooded. Can see it underwater and washing away and, you know, I don't know. I, I assume that the due diligence has been done to bring it before us, but I just, I I really um wanna be conservative about the amount of money that we put into that park, not only knowing kind of where the park dad fund sits. Um, I don't think we have this in the parks plan, right? Any of these improvements?
Uh, we do have some improvements to Riverside down there.
Okay. Um, but I also, I just, this park was underwater for more weeks in, what year was it, twenty nineteen? That it was above water? And I can still see that despite having gone through a ridiculous year last year of drought. Um, so I I'm not in favor of putting too much money in those park, to be completely honest. I think that there could be some nice improvements. I love the idea of trying to make it more natural if we can and if it won't wash away during the first flood, because that's the headline that I can see is, you know, forty thousand dollars worth of grass seed washes away in twenty twenty-two June flood, you know?
Yep. You know, Courtney, with those, those plantings, so once they get established, cause they're native, their root system is so much deeper, they're not gonna go away, but outside of that, there are grant programs that you can look into to get some of that money towards that also.
Yeah, I just I guess I worry about the growing in.
Right, yeah, for sure.
And nobody can look under their crystal ball and tell you that it's gonna flood
Sure.
this year, or that we'll have another phenomenal
That is a true statement.
So, um, that's just where I'm coming from. And I, you know, I would shy away from putting up any kind of structure in there, because I think, you know, structures are easily fifty, sixty thousand dollars, if not six figures. So um, I just wanna be really conservative about what we put in there. I do recognize that a lot of people recreate in there. Um, I think it's a great, great amenity to our community, but we did this exercise a couple of years ago when we looked at shoring up the streamline and we kind of realized that Mother Nature's gonna take that back eventually. So um, I wanna be conservative in what we plan in there. So I guess my question's just about how long it'll take before it's drought resistant.
And I don't think we have a timeline necessarily for this project, just knowing Ironwood is developing right now, so we'll keep a close eye on park dedication. But like Councilmember Mock said, we can explore grant funding too, so we'll keep an eye on it, not something that we're asking for approval of to start in spring, twenty twenty-two.
No, but I do like, I like the idea of having more walking trails and
And less maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a lot down there, I know.
No doubt.
With the, I'm asking this without checking in with the team, so
I, that's exactly what I just did, so feel free.
Would the council support like a, a um internal approach to like, you know, if we created a couple on our own parking stalls in that overlook area and then, you know, mowed in a path and let that area grow and then at, you know, or do you want, or you, do you wanna see it?
My only concern is if we just plain let it go, is that we're gonna get obnoxious weed problems
Oh, yeah.
up here and not get actual pollinator and plantings that are important. So if you can get some of those established, you can fight off some of those weeds. I don't, I, I like the idea. And I'll let you finish here of doing some stuff in, internally on a smaller scale, but
I'm just thinking if there is a, I know Chad and his team have some expertise in this, and I'm not expecting you to like say what you would do and how you do it, Chad, but I I just think if there, there's a maybe way to get to the end without having whatever, if the number's eighty, sixty, forty, like, there's a way to maybe take a couple of smaller steps. And if it's like, well, it's a hit, maybe the council and the community feel a little bit more like, yeah, let's, and we get a grant and like, and we infuse it, but I, I agree with Christie's sentiment too, it's, we don't want it to look like, well, that's the area they're not mowing anymore.
Yeah.
That's when they got real lazy all of a sudden.
Yeah.
So
I do wonder, and you know, because my heartburn is coming out the price of grass seed and soil prep, you know? What would it look like if we let it go this summer and just, you know?
I think when you look at the other phases, it's hard to have those come to fruition with some of the
By letting the grass that's down there?
Not doing the butterfly for the
Pollinator things, but, so there was a few weeks this summer that, that park, I'm sorry, just to bring this up, but that it didn't get hit with the moor. It didn't get hit with the moor, so I was down there and um, cause I, I actually called in to Brent and just let him know like, you know, we, we haven't made any choices yet. We can't just let this, you know, grow up right now. And it was, it was coming up. It was a little ratty, you know, it was a little ratty. So if we were to let some of it come up and we could see what we're getting, but I would prefer to like start infusing at least some of these pollinator things to start fighting some of that stuff back and not letting it take over. Cause once that is what you have, then you're in trouble. So
To answer your question, if we can save some money, by, if, if your team has capacity, that's an acceptable solution.
So if we're ge, if we're generally um supportive of the approach, you know, we can spend some time this winter and end of the spring thinking about if and how we could, you know, take some small steps, you know, cause you can buy the seed mix and, when I say we, I mean
You're gonna go out and pick it?
I'd see you guys.
You know me, seeding and such. I'll get my old tiller out.
Okay, with that, I think we're
Thanks for putting this together. It was exciting to look at something like this.
Yeah, thank you. It's cool to see the uh strategic plan stuff come back. Um, okay, moving on to number four, twenty twenty-two legislative priorities. Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a document that you've seen uh for several years and in essentially its current form. I will point, point out uh a new piece that Sheriff Camero had asked that we um include into our legislative priorities related to pathways to policing. Um, it's essentially a more efficient way to kind of fast-track people into the, the policing profession as you have, have read or you likely have read it through the media, newspapers, cable TV, et cetera. Uh, there is a kind of a deficit for people going into uh law enforcement and people leaving law enforcement frankly. Um, and so this is a, an opportunity to legislati- legislatively uh create some additional opportunities uh for folks that are, are looking to get into law enforcement. I don't wanna be redundant, so I'll just, if there are areas that you want me to kind of elaborate on, I'm happy to do that. What we traditionally do is you adopt them, we'll send them to Senator Coleman and Representative Nash, and then on uh Cities Day at the Capitol, uh we use that document. Uh, Councilmember Mock and Mayor Johnson have gone down a few times, I think Councilmembers here as well, uh where we visited our legislature, legislators and have used this document as kind of our talking points, a guide for that. So if there's any thing uh you wanna see additionally added, include the city, League of Minnesota City's overall comprehensive uh policy manual. So if there's something that uh you wanted to highlight and add to our city specific lists, uh now would be a great time to suggest that as well.
Um, so I just, in reading this, I remember last year you saying, Brent, like if we have too many priorities, do we have any priorities? And looking at this, um, I'm gonna advocate for really skinning it down. I think um that this should be a list that we all know like the back of our hands, so that if we see Senator Coleman or if we see Representative Nash, we can kind of drive home the four or five things that we're working on. Um, and my thoughts are that, you know, in skinning it down, we keep just the city of Carver stuff really clear, so that we can say, we asked you five things. And then hopefully be able to help them advocate on our behalf for these things. So I think what my shortlist is, is um the Carver levy items, and I think we can probably do um some wordsmithing of these to kind of pair some of them up, but the levy, the remote participation in meetings, local control and infrastructure fees. And those are the really, how many items are there? Four or five items that I have been trying to um stress with both our Senator and our representative every time I meet with them. You know, Representative Nash knows that I'm a big supporter of the levy and that we're looking for funds with that. When Senator Coleman came here and we met downstairs this summer and we kind of had her first visit to Carver, we walked the levy together, but I also talked about remote participation in meetings and local control and my concerns about preemption at the state. There are some really serious, and I know you guys have all heard me get on the soapbox before, but there are some really, quite frankly, like issues and bills that are anticipated to be going through the legislature next year that will preempt, if they go through, preempt our rights as a local governing body. So um, I think less is more and I would prefer to see some of these other things cut out.
Can you say the ones again that you would like to be taken out? Not the ones you want, and just say taken out, so I can kind of
Um, let's see. Well, if you wanna go from the top, um, the first two, levy levy.
Okay, hold on, sorry, my screen just flipped it. There we go.
Levy levy I'd like to see.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, remote participation in meetings, I wanna stay.
Mm-hmm.
Local control, opposed preemption, I wanna keep that. Um, I think fees for services can go out, transit out, election out. Infrastructure I'd like to keep, publication out, uh special assessment out and pathways to policing out.
I have some questions whenever you're Okay, so Brent, can you help me understand what the post, direct the post board? What's the post board?
Oh, I'd have to look it up, it's uh, I have to look it up.
Can I just say, like, I get like being good partners and advocating on the behalf of the Sheriff's Department and on behalf of Southwest Transit, but if we can't explain these, are they really our priorities here in the city of are they really our priorities here in the City of Carver?
I just don't.
Not that, not that you.
Yeah, I just forgot the acronym.
Yeah, no, it's, no, I know, I see what you're saying, but you're saying like we.
If we don't know what it is, if it's not on our collective radars.
And, you know, is there another advocacy route for, right, the Carver County Sheriff's Office versus the cities?
And the pathways to.
Which doesn't mean that we can't, I'm sorry to interrupt, but which doesn't mean that we can't bend Representative Nash's ear about pathways to policing.
I don't feel that I know enough about pathways to policing. I don't know what the post board is. I don't, I know, I mean, I know that they are having trouble recruiting new people. I don't know that as the city, I haven't know enough, can do enough to help you to, to fix that problem through your required trainings. That's, that seems a little out of our scope. And as much as, like I said, I support our police force, I, I don't know that this is one that.
It's the Peace Officer Standards and Training Board.
Thank you.
And none of this.
Feel free to use it at parties.
Is a support thing. I don't.
Oh, right.
Lack of support for cops. I don't have a lack of support for mass transit. I don't have a lack of support for nope, that's the wrong one. I want to keep that one, for publication requirements. It's just, I think we should skinny it down so that it's really clear. Because I think, I wonder if we wouldn't stand out. I wonder if everybody else's legislative priorities look like this laundry list. And if we have five things and are real, excuse me, succinct and can say what they are.
Yeah, and I wasn't meaning to imply that you are not in, in support of it, but I just, as, as City of Carver Council, I don't know that we can support this in a way that they need it, so then we have other priorities that are higher for us. I agree with the first, the, obviously the first two with the flooding. I did want to mention, and this is a little one detail of wordsmithing, it says the current fifty-five-year-old levy that protects Carver. When I first read that, I thought, yeah, maybe we say surrounding, protecting is a little strong, like we don't need one, it's already protecting us. So I don't know, think about it, maybe you want to, can find a better, when I said.
Where, where are you looking?
So when you're looking at the very first one, which is the flood protect, flood protection infrastructure, the bonding bill, it says the current fifty-five-year-old levy that protects the Carver's historic downtown. I was thinking, protect seems a little like, well, it's protecting us. Do we need this bonding bill? I just don't like that word. Do we want to say it's surrounding the city, something like that?
So that's the, I don't want to get into wordsmithing this, but that's the language that we've been using. And if you reread the rest of that sentence, it was removed from the Army Corps program because of its state of disrepair.
Of course, yep, and I, yep, and I read the whole, the whole thing. That stuck out. If everyone else is fine, I'm not gonna wordsmith this whole thing, but there's a couple of words that stuck out to me that were a little.
I'm fine with keeping it.
Okay, no one else feels strongly? To me, it just felt a little bit um counterintuitive to what we're looking for. Um, let's see. Um when we're talking about the meetings, uh remote participation, we put in there in private settings. Do we want to put something about for health and safety? I mean, we, we talk about COVID nineteen pandemic. So when we talk about this one and saying, part of the reason that we want to, to be able to participate remotely and in a private setting is for the well, health and wellness, because, you know, if I have a cold and I chose not to come in, I can still do that from home, but I'm not gonna go sit at the car, car, Caribou Coffee Shop with my cold and sit on there because I have to be in public space. So I'd like to see some type of wording in there that just references that it's in a private setting, something about health and wellness, because that's, that's why we're doing it. I'm also fine with.
Can I just, I'm just thinking that through. I don't want it to be limiting, because what if it's because of travel? What if Joy is in China, you know? I don't hate it and I get where you're coming from, but I just don't want it to limit us. And again.
I guess because we're in the midst of it and we're looking at, trying to punch this forward, I think that has a little punch behind it right now. I would like to see it, I guess the rest of the council can weigh in if they think it's important enough or not.
I don't want to see it.
Okay. Okay, I do, you don't.
I, I, I don't want to necessarily see just health and safety because it could be for any kind of flexibility reason. Could be travel, could be I'm stuck at home with taking, also monitoring a parent or I, whatever, right? There could be a lot of different reasons from a flexibility standpoint.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with the bourbon.
I'm sorry, the election, there was the election one, so the election regulations can go, that one can go. Special assessment, so when it says it should be reduced to fifteen percent, can you tell me, is there why this one came on the radar here?
Yeah, so right now we're required to assess twenty percent of the property or twenty percent of the project to the properties that are participating. If you remember the, I think it was the twenty seventeen project, we were in a position with the Swansons where if we reduce their assessment, we would have fallen below that twenty percent and we wouldn't have been able to fund that project. So what happens right now is we um, we use a a name, it's escaping, an appraisal process where they come up with what that value is and that's the amount that we assess. I would say kind of the process of yesteryear is cities just assess twenty percent or in some cases fifty percent. And the, what happens if you assess for less than that, the project goes to a, um, has to be voted on by residents. And so that you need to assess at least twenty percent. What we're saying is, we're assessing what that appraisal amount says, so if it's fifteen percent, that's the amount that they justifiably owe. We don't want to try to manufacture our way to get up to twenty percent just so that we can do this street project without an election. Does that make sense?
Do we have many more of those situations facing our city?
Hopefully not.
That's what, that's what I thought your answer would be, okay.
But I can't, I mean, I'm totally jinxing myself, but I can't think of any special assessment project. I mean, we've done all the areas, all like in the last ten years, like entire downtown, the Lunzen addition. There will likely be one in the future for, for the city to, to use. I would say it's not a clear and present, like
Yep.
we, we really need to do that. We've just experienced it. We, I think we have a good story of, like, we're in a position where we had to do some mathematical gymnastics to make sure we stayed at that twenty percent and would want to try to avoid that again in the future.
Yeah. Is there something going through right now and with this statute besides us? I mean, is there another, are there other cities who are?
Yeah, it's part of, uh, I don't have the number in front, but it's, it's something that's been discussed at the league and something that they're advocating for. Because it's a, to your point, it's a, it's not a Carver specific problem. It's a ongoing problem with a lot of municipalities because people are switching to this method where you get where you have an appraiser do a benefit analysis and they say like, well, this property benefits by five thousand. You add them all up, well, it's not twenty percent of the project and so then you can't use the four twenty-nine process, which is that special assessment bonding authority. So it's really in a lot of, in some cases, I will say throwing a wrench into how people or how cities do street reconstruction projects.
Okay, so I would advocate for that one staying back in. We've had some pain in the past and I don't want to, if hopefully we don't have to see so much pain in the future. But out of the ones that you had mentioned, Courtney, that is the one that I would like to see back in.
Laurie, Joy, um and let's see, we're at ten to seven. Do you want to take a break and come back to this during the meeting?
I agree with Christie Mock's assessment of which ones align with what you had mentioned and then adding that one. Um I just want to make a public comment that the pathways to policing, as much as I would like to consider that a high priority, I just don't want to focus on one industry. So kind of thinking, all right, you know, I know there's other industries that have some of the same challenges. You know, we're, we're, we're just gotta limit, you know, what our top priorities are.
I like your skidding down idea. I like adding the special assessment one back in, that's the one, right? But I like the idea of skinning it down to really what is near and dear to Carver's priorities list. Um absolutely.
So are we okay then? Um I'm just trying to go through and highlight what we.
What we said no to?
So it's essentially removing fees for services, transit systems, election regulations, publication requirements and pathways to policing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I was looking for contact.
All right. Good, clear? Um, all right, can we hold the city manager's report? Then I would undertake a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All second.
Motion by Councilmember McKnight and a second by Councilmember Sarah. Uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.